I'm going to introduce our candidates for school committee from Ward 4. Alex Koysman, a former refugee from the Soviet Union, graduate of Brandeis University, computer engineer, president of the nonprofit, all volunteer Russian Jewish Community Foundation. Is a member of the, is a candidate for the school committee. And as a member of the school committee, I think, well, I think that's, that's the bio there. Tamika Olashewski.
Yes.
Is that better?
Yes, that was correct.
Is a lawyer and mother of fourth grade twins at Burr. She's active in our schools and community in roles such as vice chair of the Burr School Council and is a member of the Newton Human Rights Commission. And without further ado, let's get to our, get to our question. So, one of the things that students and teachers and everyone in education strives for is constant improvement. So, I'd like each of you to please identify an issue in the Newton Public Schools where you think we need some improvement and let us know how you would improve it. Mr. Koysman, why don't you take that first?
So, the banner of my campaign, "Their Future Begins in School." So, the student's future begins in school. I came from the Soviet Union, a country where I was bullied and discriminated against me because of my Jewish background, but I received good education in STEM. This education allowed me to have a great career and great life in this country. So, I want to improve academics. The main theme that the school needs to improve, academics. The rest is secondary.
Tamika Olashewski, what's an issue that you would like to see improved?
Please call me Tamika.
Tamika, okay. I will do that.
What I would like to improve with the Newton Public Schools is what we are promising and delivering. We are promising excellence and equity, and I think we're doing a very good job of delivering those things, but I think there are always room, there's always room for improvement. I think meeting the needs of all of our various learners continues to be something that we should be striving to do, and it would be my goal to make sure that on the school committee we are, we are not ignoring any of our, of our students, that we are serving their needs in a very broad and varied way.
Thank you. The Newton School Committee and the Newton Teachers Association are currently engaged in a long and difficult set of contract talks to settle on a new contract. How would you realize the goal of attracting and retaining excellent teachers while being fiscally responsible? And Tamika, you can go first.
Well, first, I'm proud to be endorsed by the Newton Teachers Association. Our teachers do an amazing job of nurturing the minds and the hopes of our future generations, so that is a very worthy task. So, making sure that we are attracting and retaining the best quality of teachers starts, I think, with settling our contracts. Settling them in a timely manner, that would be something that I hope to make sure that is, is something that we can do here in Newton. Our teachers, as I said, are very hardworking and they do deserve to come to be very adequately, fairly paid, fairly compensated in light of the surrounding communities, so I'd make sure we do that.
And if you don't mind me using first names, Alexander, please answer the question.
So, first of all, the negotiations has been going on for like nine months. I think the school committee is not doing their right job, that the negotiations are still, the contract is still not signed, but I think the primary responsibility of the school is before the students. The students come first. So, and I think that Newton schools should be equipped, should have the best teachers, and I actually think that we should think about having better teachers and compensate them accordingly to their performance.
Okay. Thank you. Let me ask each of the candidates a follow-up on this in the same order, which is, with a limited amount of resources available, higher salaries can lead to having fewer teachers and therefore larger class sizes. Could you tell us your philosophy as to how to balance those two competing interests, please?
Well, it's, one of my priorities is to preserve our reasonable class sizes, and I think that you do that through careful management of our resources. Understanding, of course, that we're a very people-heavy employer. Our teachers represent 85% of our budget, and so that doesn't leave too much room beyond that for all of the various, all of the various programs, initiatives, and worthy goals that we have. So, making sure that we are having, as a school committee member, I would have to advocate for an allocation that allows us to do the breadth of our work.
Okay. And Alexander, please?
So, I looked up US News and the World Report, the most cited statistics and ranking of the school systems. Newton school systems are ranked 29th in the state and 23rd in the Boston area. This was not the case 20 years ago and 40 years ago. Lexington is ranked number four, and a lot of schools like Arlington and Needham are ranked higher. Why did this happen? I think school needs to look at what happened. The budget went up more than 50%, but the grades went down. So, we should be more efficient with what we have and with more efficient and rigorous training for teachers and students, we can achieve better results. We should be in the top five.
Thank you. And Alexander, you'll be going first on this question, which is, many school districts around the country and the state are considering later high school start times. What is your opinion on this? Should we start our high school day later, and why or why not?
Obviously, I like to listen to both sides of the aisle. That's what I've been doing pretty much all of my life. From so far, what I've been talking to a number of parents, and they're all telling me, once again, so far, that the later time is better. They cite such things as the kids cannot get up in the morning, they drive semi-asleep to school, and of course, the traffic is much higher in the lower times, at the lower times of the day. So, I think, from what I hear, having a later time is more beneficial to more people that I've met so far, but I'm willing to listen to the other side and see what, how they advocate for the same time.
All right. Go ahead, Tamika.
So, I've been campaigning for about a year and a half, and probably the second most frequently asked questions of voters when I meet them in coffees or out at public events is, what are you going, how do you feel about high school start time? And I will share with you what I share with them. I believe that the science is incontrovertible, that a later start time will promote our students in their, their social and emotional well-being. Newton is an excellent school system, but it also produces a tremendous amount of stress on our teenage students. So, if, if it's within our means to alleviate that stress in some respects in this particular way, I think it's incumbent upon us to evaluate and implement that as a worthy goal. So, I'm in favor of high school start time, of a late start time.
Thank you, Tamika. And you'll get the next question first, which is that one of the great concerns of the Newton Public Schools over the years has been achieving equity within the school system. What is an example of something that you currently think is inequitable, and how would you correct that problem?
Well, something that has been ongoing over the past year or so has been an effort to equitize the way that our Creative Arts and Sciences program is run. And the underlying problem and concern is that there are some schools whose PTOs are able to fundraise very quickly, easily, and effectively, while there are other schools that struggle a little bit. So, the thinking is, in Newton, we have 22 schools. 15 elementary schools participating in Creative Arts and Sciences, and so for us to make that equal across our, or fair across our district is the goal.
Alexander?
Inequity, that's a very good question. To me, inequity comes also in relationship to academics. Today, we see in high school, there is a big difference between students who went to after-school tutoring, like the Russian School of Mathematics, and the students who could not, who did not go through that. The students who went to after-school activities and tutoring at the great expense of their parents and in terms of their time and money are doing much better off in future life, in future college. This is where the inequity starts. The inequity starts at school. So, we should fix that and allow rigorous training in math and sciences so parents don't have to drive their kids to after-school activities. Schools should provide that.
Thank you. And you'll get the next question first, which is, historically in Newton, we've had a number of very significant challenges with our facilities, including having enough space, enough quality space, in which to educate our students. At various times, we have been forced to open a middle school across the street from another middle school, to educate students in janitorial closets, and to have subpar facilities in a number of ways. We are currently at perhaps a lull in the increase in the number of students in our system. However, there have been recent large-scale development proposals in the city, as well as a proposal to rezone the city and allow much, much denser development than is allowed now. What would you do to act proactively to make sure that Newton is able to accommodate this increased student population in Newton? Alexander?
Okay. Well, I'm a problem solver. I'm an engineer. In engineering, they give me the problem and I have to solve it. The same thing here. We have a number of students and we have a square footage. So, it's not that the increase in the population is going to be 50%. I'm sure we will be able to handle the, the school increases, the way you can reassign some students, especially new students, to a different district where maybe there are fewer students, or maybe just increase a little bit, put extra few desks in the class. These are all temporary things and they can be resolved, but the main thing in the schools is not square footage, but the students.
Tamika.
Thank you. Well, first, I have to say that by law, we are, we have a duty, an obligation, to provide every student in Newton with a free and, a free and equal public education. That is, that's federal law. So, what do we do about it if we have a sudden influx of students? Well, we have some tools at our disposal, and the school committee is already employing those tools. We've had a demographers report to study potential impacts of groups of students coming into different neighborhoods and impacting any one particular school. What we also have is a wonderful CIP, a Capital Improvement Plan, which says, when we build a new school, when we renovate, we are expanding capacity to make sure that we have that give and take to absorb any additional needs for, for students.
Let me just ask a follow-up on that, because we recently built a new Newton North High School, beautiful building, we're in it now, and the major renovations were recently done to Newton South. Part of that process was to equalize the populations of the schools. Newton North used to be about twice as big as Newton South, and in that process, the capacity of Newton North is, was reduced. Now, both high schools are approximately at capacity, so what would you do to, and we closed a lot of elementary schools in the city. So, I mean, here's the question, I guess. Do, are we going to need more buildings or just adding on to our existing buildings?
Well, I hope by seeing this beautiful school, we don't need any more buildings. What I observe in academia, colleges, and schools, it's building more and more schools, but the scores are going down. I think we should spend more of our valuable, limited resources to improving the curriculum and academics as opposed to adding another room or another building. I'm sure we can find room for all students who need to be educated.
Tamika.
So, what I will say is, I understand that we are a little squeezed at the high schools currently, but there's the other side of our pendulum that you have to consider, and that is, in the elementary schools, for the first time in a number of years, we've had a decline in enrollment. We are at a bit of a plateau, and so what that means is that as the students go through the schools and through the elementary, through the middle, and into the high school, you will start to see that number, that number take a tapering off. And we're not there yet, but I'm very confident in the fact that we will be able to accommodate all of our students and have capacity at all of the schools.
Without building new schools, I'm sorry?
Correct. Well, we are building new schools when we renovate and expand, so.
Well, okay.
You mean an additional?
Well, so, Newton used to have 25 elementary schools.
Yes, sir.
We're down to 17 now, I think?
Yep.
Something to that effect. We've closed schools throughout the city. Just to be clear, neither one of you would support building additional elementary schools?
I don't know about that, but I would love to, if we had the funds, I think, sure, that would be wonderful. But I think what's key here is that we'll never again dispose of a school. We've seen that that's not the way to go.
Alexander, would you be open to building more elementary schools, or you think it's a mistake?
Building additional schools and then closing them down is very expensive. As I said, we can increase, put extra desks in the classroom and concentrate on academics.
Another issue that the Newton Public Schools has been very concerned about, Tamika alluded to it earlier, is the requirement there be a free education for everyone. Related to that is the issue of school fees. We currently charge a number of fees in our schools. The school committee recently eliminated the elementary school bus fee, but there are other bus fees still, and there are also athletic fees. And just recently, the middle schools sent out an announcement of a fee for academic workbooks, although apparently that, that has been rescinded. There has been some great discussion recently over what the schools should and should not be charging for. How much of our education should be paid for with property taxes and general revenues, and how much should be fee-based? Tamika, I'm going to give you 45 seconds on this one, because this is a fairly complicated question.
Well, as a practical matter, I would love for there to be no fees. I think as a public school, it was shocking to me a few years ago when I learned that there would be fees for drama, for riding the bus, for participating in a sport. So, I feel some of the frustration and the pain that these fees might bring in. On the flip side, I acknowledge the fact that we would then need to find that those funds, we would have a trade-off in our system to absorb, to allow us to offset those, the fees, if we were to eliminate them entirely. And so, the reality of the fact is, while they are onerous and can be, can be very burdensome on families, we do have caps in place. We do have fee waivers in place. Those programs need to be improved, certainly, I would, I would agree with that, but I worry that if we were to eliminate the fees entirely, that would put strains somewhere else in our, in our system. And as it were, I would never want to kind of overburden any other area of our, of our schools.
Thank you, Tamika. Alexander, 45 seconds.
Well, we're already spending on schools, $220 million. I think this should include $100 and $200 additional fees that families are taking, especially some of them are not taking those classes and some are. But the biggest problem with fees that are hidden fees, because the schools in Newton do not provide adequate math training, and the parents have to spend $2,000 to drive their kids, to pay for them after-school activities, as I mentioned, the Russian School of Mathematics. This is the biggest fee that the school system puts on people, and on, on parents and on students. So, I would concentrate on eliminating those fees, so students and parents don't have to go to those additional schools and have more money for themselves. And we have enough taxes in this town, and we can be more practical and decide how to spend the money wisely.
So, I'm just going to ask a quick follow-up, 15 seconds each. The proposed middle school math workbook fee, do you support that or oppose that? Tamika?
I think it is reasonable to ask for fees if we have the means for folks who can't afford to pay that fee to be waived. And so, for that reason, because I feel that that is probably built into the, the fee waiver structure, I, I would support that.
Alexander?
Charging parents for additional fees for math, I, I'm not for it. I think, once again, parents should spend their money for not driving kids to after-school activities, improve and rigorous math education, and then we can save money on that.
Thank you, Alexander. You're going to get the next question first, Alexander, which is, Newton's Safe Routes to Schools has reported that 40% of auto traffic in Newton is related to driving students to and from school, and many parents worry that the density of traffic puts students at risk. What would you suggest be done to reduce school-related automobile traffic and to increase the safety of students who are in transit?
So, this is probably related to when the school starts and the school ends. Most of the traffic, when I commute to work, is between 8:00 and 9:00 o'clock. Probably, if we start the school later than that, there will be certainly less traffic. It's going to be good, better for environment, better for parents, and better for the time that we spend on the road, and students will be in school on time. So, school hours, from what I can see, is the best solution to less traffic and fewer accidents.
Okay. Let me just ask you a quick follow-up on that, you have a few seconds left anyway.
Absolutely.
Which is, you mentioned making school start later would be, reduce the traffic. Are you referring just to the proposal to start high school later, or would you, are you proposing that elementary and middle school also start later?
Well, if we put the school times later for all schools, obviously, it's going to be less traffic. Probably, younger kids, more bound to their parents, and I don't know, it depends how the parents start work, but I would definitely start with high school, because high school students go to bed later, and they need probably to more sleep later time, get up. So, I would start with the high school, if that doesn't help.
Thank you. I didn't, okay. Okay. Tamika, on the safety in getting to school and the school traffic, please.
Well, I think, as a person who walks her two kids to school every day, rain, snow, sleet, hail, I would encourage my fellow parents to do the same where they're able. Where they are not able, I think there are some simple tools that we should employ to make those areas of getting to school safer for our kids. Perhaps we have what's called a blue zone diet, where we park remotely and we encourage our families to walk to the school. Not only would that encourage greater communication and community building, but it would also be safer because of the bottlenecks of getting into the schools and rushing in the morning. I'm proud to attend our Safe Routes to School meetings, and I would hope to continue that advocacy on the school committee, and yeah, they have some really great ideas, and I think it's important for us to study them.
Thank you. I'm going to ask you about another issue that has been of great concern historically to people in Newton, which is that high levels of stress are reported by students of all ages, and this can lead to depression, anxiety, poor physical health, and diminished learning. What role should the Newton Public Schools play in helping students to address stress, and what role should parents play? Tamika?
Well, I think our school has started on its path to helping both the students and their parents address stress in our schools. The school committee has set social and emotional learning as a system-wide goal, and what that is, is it recognizes that our students are having a great deal of stress throughout the, from K to 12. It, stress is not something, and emotional kind of unhealth is not something that's typical only of high school students. You can find that in the elementary schools as well. So, setting it as a priority is one thing. What does that mean? So, putting in place practical steps and programs to teach better health, better safe health, excuse me, to teach better social and emotional learning skills of parents as well as students is, is key.
Alexander?
One of the items on my agenda for school committee run is to teach objective Western and United States history. From what I see from many students today, they don't get the proper education about what America is. As an immigrant, I can say, this is the greatest country on the planet. People come to it, people are not running away from this. This should be taught in school, that we're not just a country of slavery, but we sacrificed and liberated the slaves. So, if, if kids feel good about their country, that this is the best place on the planet, they will be healthier and they will be happier, and this is one of the things I would do. Also, if school teaches math properly, then they don't have to go to after-school activities, they can learn everything in school. So, I would start with those two things and see, I'm sure we're going to get great results.
Tamika, Alexander, thank you, Alexander. Alexander's now several times raised this issue of whether Newton Public Schools' math program is adequate or requires supplementing with after-school programs. I'd like to hear your view on that. Do you feel that Newton does a good enough job of teaching math?
I think Newton does a fairly excellent job of teaching most subjects, and it's not my opinion, it's the opinion that has brought many of us in this room to Newton, and it's the reason why many families in Newton stay after generations. We do a very, very good job of educating kids. That's a proven track record. It's like, again, it's not my opinion. What I can say in particular about our math programs is, over the years, we've tried various different things, and I think it's, it's a real testament of the fact that we're always seeking to make it better for our students, to have wonderful teachers and have strong programs that we're continually evaluating and implementing new programs. I know at the elementary, in the elementary schools where my kids are, my kids are in fourth grade, they started a new math program, and it's been wonderful. It's teaching the way to get to the problem rather than just getting to the problem, which I.
Alexander, I'm also, thank you, Tamika. I'm also going to give you an extra 30 seconds on this topic, but I want to focus in just a little bit, please. You've made several general statements about the inadequacy, in your mind, of our math program in Newton.
Yes.
Could you be a little more specific about what you think isn't being taught well enough, or what you would do differently?
Well, if you look at the rankings by US News and the World Report, we're 57th in the state for math proficiency. 57, just think about this. So, this is the reason, it's very, very low, in my opinion, and, but, you know, parents pay with their money and with their.
Just to be clear, the question, is there a particular thing you would change? Why do you think?
More rigorous training. More rigorous training. If RSM can provide students with high SAT scores, we can do that too. So, parents spend this money because the student program is not, the math program is not sufficient. So, this is an example of, so we have to do this. So, we have to make it more efficient.
Okay. I think we have time for one more question from me, then you're each going to get the opportunity to ask each other a question. So, the last question that I'm going to ask is, Newton's student body is much more racially and ethnically diverse than our teaching ranks. How far, what should Newton do to increase the racial and ethnic diversity of our teachers to more closely align with our students? Alexander?
I think the teachers should be hired based on their performance and their knowledge, and not on the basis of race. When I go see a doctor, I don't care if he's black or white, I want to see, have the best doctor who can help me. So, the same thing here. We should not discriminate against anyone, but we should not be attracting teachers based on the color of their skin. This is, we, there's no discrimination, and we should hire the best teachers.
Tamika.
So, I don't agree that hiring a diverse group of teachers that are more reflective of the demographics of our students would be considered discrimination. I think what it is, is it's acknowledging the fact that students perform better when they feel that they belong. And so, if this is one of the ways that a student can look and see a teacher and think, "They're like me," that's a huge component of feeling connected and rooted to your school, to feeling that you belong, and to performing better academically. We've seen this. This is, again, not my opinion, it's, it's well documented. And so, how do we attract teachers of color to better reflect the demographics of our students? There are various strategies that we can employ, and as a school committee member, I would absolutely be a champion of making sure that we're doing that.
Thank you, Tamika. Tamika, this is your opportunity to ask a brief question, not a speech, but a brief question to your opponent.
Well noted. I will keep my remarks brief. So, Alex, I hope I can call you Alex?
Absolutely.
So, I know that you, I know of your active support in the allegations that our teachers are indoctrinated are indoctrinating students with antisemitism, which I strongly disagree. Can you discuss your views and your activities on this issue?
So, this is not what I'm running for school committee, I'm running on improving academics, and this is my personal experience. So, this question is not related to the current school activity. You're asking me about my other activities? I do a lot of other things. I, I like technology. I'm president of the Russian Jewish Community Foundation, and part of my involvement there is standing up against antisemitism. So, do you want me to talk about that, or you want to?
Well, I think my question.
I don't think we need to get into a back and forth. You can answer the question as you, you heard the question, you can answer how you would like to.
So, Newton School Committee is, is a very, very solid body with 100% approval of certain things, but I noticed our, our community was interested in debate on education in terms of Middle East curriculum, that would be more objective. And I was, I made a couple of, I think, two speeches at the Newton School Committee, that I asked the school committee for a debate, and instead, we received, you know, absolutely no response. So I think a good debate is very good.
I think your time has expired to answer that. Alexander, do you have a question for Tamika?
Yes. So Tamika, what I've noticed in the school committee, it's always 100% approval for what superintendent says. It's 100%. Growing up in the Soviet Union, it was like 99.9%, even though I don't know who with that 0.1%. You seem to be endorsed by all politicians. So, how would you be different from what is happening on now? How would you improve, for example, academics? Because you seem to be the candidate of the current and the past, and we need improvement, and we need the new opinion, and more diversity.
Well, I must first point out, I'd probably bring a great deal of diversity, just acknowledging the elephant in the room. So, along with your, to address your point that there's 100% approval for the superintendent, I make no such claim to be 100% aligned with our superintendent. I've already demonstrated my advocacy for Forge, and as a parent leader, that I will challenge the superintendent when I think it is necessary. I've done that, I promise to do it again, believe me. As to the fact that all politicians support me, I am so proud and honored by the level of support that I've gotten from folks, regular folks, all across Newton, who support me, because they know that my commitment to our schools has been proven, tested, and solid for many years, and that I would continue to do that for our schools.
Thank you. We've got 30 seconds each for closing remarks. Alexander?
So, if elected to the school committee, I will be a strong advocate for better academics, especially in the STEM area, also for better vocational training for kids who are not college-bound. Also, I would like to add transparency to the school curriculum, put it online. The reason for transparency is that the parents can see what the kids are being taught in school, and parents' participation is the greatest asset to improving education. Study after study proves that. So, curriculum online, better academics, and better vocational training is what we're striving for.
Thank you, Alexander. Tamika?
Well, I first have to thank you, Ken, for moderating. You did a very good job. And thank you, Alex, for agreeing to participate in this debate. I feel, as a candidate running for election, that it's my duty to make myself widely available to the voters, and so I thank you for attending, agreeing to attend this one debate. I was very disappointed not to be able to participate in the League of Women Voters Forum, but I've attended many others since then. And so, the reason I attend these debates, and I'm available to the voters, is because my commitment and my passion for supporting our schools is true. I will continue to do that as a member of our school committee. I would be proud and honored to have your vote, and to represent you on the school committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tamika, and thank you, Alexander. And now's the time for your applause for both candidates. And, and to our, to our audience here, I'm sure you all know this, but to our audience at home, this is an at-large race, where you get to vote for one of these two candidates. The election is November 5th, and everyone in the city, regardless of which ward you live in, can vote for one, but not both, of these fine people.